Welcome, everybody, to the zoning board of August 25th, 2020. My name is Marty Aitkins. I'm in chairman, the vice chair, Mr. Kavayis. Board members, Mr. O'Brien, Mr. Chin, Mr. Ray Dell, Mr. Hemel, and Mr. Frankel, all in attendance. We have a few things we have to do first. Could I have a motion to waive the reading of the minutes of the last meeting?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I make a motion to waive the reading of the minutes of the August 11th meeting.
Second.
Second. Seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Post, so moved. Under tonight's agenda, under all business, case number ZB A 2029, Michael Davis for a variance to construct an addition for an additional living space on the premise number 63 Lennox Street. I have a letter here to withdraw it out prejudiced. Could I have a motion, please, Mr. Vice Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, matter number 20-29, Michael Davis for a variance to construct an addition for additional living space on the premises numbered 63 Lennox Street. I make a motion to withdraw it out prejudice.
Second. On the motion, CNN, all in favor?
Aye.
Post, so moved. Further, under new business, case number ZB A 2036, RL Estate Development LLC for variance to demolish the existing structure and construct a new seven-unit residential building on the premises number 68 Old Colony Ave. I have a letter here to continue this. They have to go to Planning Board November 17th if they could, Mr. Vice Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, matter number 20-36, RL Estate Development LLC for variance to demolish the existing structure and construct a new seven-unit residential building on the premises numbered 6-8 Old Colony Ave. I make a motion to continue the hearing until November 17th.
Second.
On the motion, CNN, all in favor?
Aye.
Post, so moved. Further, under tonight's business, ZB A case 2023, Habitat Opco LLC for special permit variance finding to operate a medical and counseling clinic on the premise number 165 Washington Street. We've had our hearing, we've let people speak. The only thing we ask for is review of parking and traffic studies. Now, we had so many letters going back and forth here since Friday. I'm going to ask the board members one by one that is sitting on this case. Who's on this case?
Aitkins, Kavayis, Charlie O'Brien, Russell Chin, and...
Mr. Hemel? And Mr. Ray Dell? Mr. Ray Dell, Mr. Hemel, either one of you is on that case?
I was on the original.
That's the original?
Yep.
All right. So, us five. I'm going to ask you one at a time. Charlie, did you get to read the traffic studies back and forth?
I did.
Mr. Kavayis?
Yes, sir, yes.
Did you get to read those?
Yes.
Ray Dell, did you get to read those?
I did.
And Mr. Chin, did you get to read those?
Yes, I did.
And I did. Okay. So, motion and a vote. I know we can have a discussion here. I know what I believe, what I read, that I don't think it's practical at that place because of the parking and because of the traffic. It's too much too early in the day and during the day for a place with seven spots to park. How you cut up that back, people have to get in and out of the other building too. So, personally, I'm voting no, and those are my reasons for the traffic study. Mr. Kavayis, comments?
I'll be voting no.
Any comments?
Well, I think you pretty much summed it up very well, Mr. Chairman. I don't see how that could work with the parking situation and the traffic situation that it is now.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yeah, I have a... Can I have a couple of minutes here?
Sure, you can have all the time.
Attorney Murray, first, I'd like to compliment your client on the work they've done in the community. I've paid a lot of attention to Broad Street location since the first time he brought a case forward, and it appears as though it's very safe and clean down there. Now for the bad news. I spent quite a bit of time on Washington Street recently, in that corridor from the Four River Bridge to Hancock Street, and I believe that there are two locations, the Dunkin' Donuts and the nearby 7-Eleven, that would generate a similar number of trips to the site that you're looking to operate there. Even with the proposals that are contained in the traffic study, to purchase T-Passes, to find off-street parking for the employees, and to expand the hours of dispensing the medication, and maybe shuttling clients to and from the remote parking area locations on 165 Washington Street, it's my opinion that it's not an appropriate location at this location. And I'll be voting no.
Hold on one second. We lost something.
No, you're okay. You keep going. I'm walking.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it's not...
Mr. Chin, any comments?
No, I don't have any further comments beyond what Charlie and you have already raised. I do think that there will probably be a better location for this use. So, I'm voting no.
Okay. Mr. Ray Dell?
The shared driveway, I think, is what presents the biggest challenge for me, so I'll be voting no.
I can't see people on this. Put that back up. I can't see. There you go.
Can Ray Dell say that again, please?
Ray Dell, could you please say that again?
I said, "The shared driveway presents the biggest challenge for me at the site, and because of that, I'll be voting no."
All right. Mr. Kavayis, could I have a motion, please?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Wait a minute. I'll let Callan want to speak. Callan? Sorry? There you go.
Thank you, Chairman. I appreciate the board's time and consideration of the matters. I just wanted to be clear that when you confirmed with the board members that you had reviewed the traffic information, that that included the updated traffic, the supplemental traffic report that came in last week, as well as the city engineer's response to that?
Yeah, they all came in. I know we all got them online, and I asked them, "Did you get everything that came to you?" And I'll ask them again. Charlie, did you get all those?
Yes, I did. I got the traffic report from our traffic engineer, the update from Van Ness Associates, and the turning plan in the parking area in the red.
It went back and forth, correct?
Right.
Mr. Kavayis, did you get all those?
Yes, I did, and I read them all.
Okay. Mr. Chin?
Yes, sir. I received them, and I reviewed them.
Okay. And Mr. Ray Dell?
Yes, I believe I've received them all at this point.
Thank you. Any other questions, Ms. Murray?
I just wanted to note for the record that the revised traffic report reflects actual traffic counts based on the operation currently going on in Broad Street, and confirms that at most 11 parking spaces would be required, and the city's own traffic engineer suggested in her memo that she was satisfied that between mitigation and onsite and on-street parking, that there would be sufficient parking for this use.
Yeah. Well, I mean, I've lived here 99% of my life, and I'd say, and I know these areas very well. And I do go down there, and I sit down, and I watch what's going on in these streets, and we have something this big. And I wouldn't be satisfied personally with those parking spaces in the back and sheer driveway, and then the people just in that area, all them people at that one time. I don't think it's a good fit. I just don't. That's my two cents. I've looked at it, and I've looked at it, believe me, objectively, as I could, and I know we need a place like that, and I know we all need a place like that. We all have people in our family that need places like that. But that's just my two cents, and I have to... And believe me, I fought hard on this one. So, Mr. Kavayis, could I have a motion, please?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Matter number 20-23, Habitat Opco LLC for a special permit variance finding to operate a medical and counseling clinic on the premises numbered 165 Washington Street. Make a motion to deny the special permit to variance in the finding.
Second.
On the motion, CNN, all in favor?
Aye.
I'm going to call a roll vote. Charlie?
No.
Sorry, Mr. Kavayis?
No.
Mr. Chin?
No.
Right. Mr. Ray Dell?
No.
Mr. Aitkins, no. Motion passes. It fails. Thank you, everyone. Under new business, case number ZB A 2028, we have banned for variance finding to construct an addition on the rear of the property by adding one new three-bedroom dwelling unit on the premises number 27 Summer Street. The applicant or representative here? Who's first?
Min Van.
Yeah, Min Van. Looking from on the left, he was just there. Where'd he go? Min Van.
It might be Jim Chan. I'm not sure. Hold on a minute. Let me grab the file. Because Min Van was a great tree. Yep.
Question, Mr. Chairman?
Yep, you're up.
Will you be swearing people in for the...
Yes.
That's all. Thank you.
Yes. Mr. Van, can you hear me? Where'd you go?
He's on mute.
Please unmute it?
Yes.
Okay. I'm going to have everyone that's speaking on this issue take oaths. Are you going to tell the truth? Mr. Kavayis?
Yes, if everyone who's going to be speaking on this can raise their right hand and repeat, that you'll tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God.
How many people do I have up here? Two?
Looks like it.
John? These are the only two people that have their hands up. The other people, I can't even see. They're on the phone.
If people want to speak, they're going to have to put their... Nobody has their cameras on.
All right, you're going to have your camera on if you're going to speak on any of these.
They're all waiting for their cases to be...
So, just so you know, you have to have your camera on, so we know you're going to speak. Okay? We have two people speaking. John? Okay. Mr. Kavayis, you're up.
I'm sorry?
Press star nine, yeah. If you want to speak on this case. Star nine, put your... Okay. Mr. Kavayis, you're up.
Didn't we just... Do we have more people now?
No, there's two. I don't know if they heard him. I was talking the whole time. More time. We lost you for a sec, too.
Okay, okay. To everyone who's going to be speaking on this matter, if you could, raise your right hand and swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth today in your testimony, so help you God. John?
All in favor?
Thank you.
Mr. Van, you have the floor. Explain what you want to do. Van?
Hi. Yes.
Yep.
Because Jim Chan is to be represented for me, you know, but now he's busy, so something else happened for him, so he cannot come up. I'm the owner for 27 Summer Street. We add the additional in the back and re-up for second floor for multi-family, two-family.
Yep.
What we do.
So, what you're doing is you're taking the one family, putting addition on the back, and you're going to make it a two-family home, correct?
Yes.
Now, the first floor, all of it, both places after the addition, is going to be one stories, one apartment. The second story is the second apartment. Is that correct, what I read?
Yes, correct.
Okay. Is there any questions of the board members?
I have none.
None at this time.
No questions.
Mr. Ray Dell?
I got none.
Okay.
So, it's a single-family adding addition to become a two?
It's a single-family. They're going to make it from a one to a two. That's what he's doing. Not adding the property on that. He's just making an addition and turning it into a two-family. I have... Is there anyone that'd like to speak in favor of this? Anyone like to speak in favor? Raise your hand.
Take care of that.
You're swallowing two people.
He said he was going to be on. The crow, are you on here? Now, what we did is we lost our connection, so at 55 C Street, so we're back in action now.
Jay Porter Park.
No. No. We were. Does anyone want to speak in favor? John, did anyone want to speak in favor of this project?
I think we were trying to find...
Yeah, John? John Otterfield? John, you're up.
John Otterfield, can you hear me?
Yeah.
John Otterfield, 62 Granwell Road. I am in favor of this project. It's residential B. We only want it to go from one to a two. I think it's a small ass. Everyone's building like crazy over there, so I want to say I'm in favor of this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else like to speak in favor? First call. Virtual hand raise, star nine. Anyone? Anyone want to speak on this issue? Second call? Third call? I have a letter here. I'd like to read and call upon the hearing calls. I got a letter here from the DPW. Review the above referenced project. Our comments are as follows. Specify how much impervious area will be increased through development. Provide plans showing the existing site conditions. Layout of utility, grading, drainage, and construction details. Explain how the surface runoff will be discharged and treated. Provide dimensions and grades of paving area and all driveway entrances. Upon completion, this project as built needs to be submitted along with a digital file. If there's anything else, please revise. Is there anyone opposed or undecided? Opposed or undecided? First call. Star nine, or raise your hand. Second call. Third call closed. I'll be voting in favor.
Marty, I did just get a text from the city council, Carl. He said that he got booted, and he couldn't get back in for some reason, but he just said he wanted to say that he hasn't heard any opposition.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you for that. Lisa.
Yes, I'm sorry. I joined late. Is this called solely for the Habitat Opco...
No, that's already gone.
I'm sorry?
That project's already gone.
Already been heard.
It's already been heard. They voted on it. No.
They voted no?
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else? Kavayis, comments?
No, I think, as John says, it's a little one, you know.
Yep. Mr. Ray Dell?
I think it's a better plan than we saw on this property before. I like that, you know, it's down to one dwelling unit, so...
Yep. Like Mr. O'Brien?
I agree with Brian. I'll be voting yes.
And Mr. Chin?
Yes, it's a reasonable request, and voting yes.
Have a motion, please, Mr. Kavayis.
Mr. Chairman, matter number 20-28, Min Van for a variance finding to construct an addition at the rear of the property, adding one new three-bedroom dwelling unit on the premises number 27 Summer Street. Make a motion to grant the variance.
Second.
On the motion, CNN, all in favor? We're going to do a roll call. Mr. Kavayis?
Aye.
Ray Dell?
Aye.
O'Brien?
In favor.
Chin?
In favor.
Mr. Aitkins, yes. Next case, we have ZB A 20-37, Michael Monahan for variance to demolish the existing structure, construct three-new-unit townhouse residential buildings on the premises 30 Townhill Street. Is the applicant or representative here? Mr. Monahan here?
It's John Hughes. He's one of them.
Donahue, can you unmute yourself, please?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
All right. Who's going to speak on this?
So, I'll start off, Mr. Monahan.
Okay.
I'm here representing the owner, Sean Farrell.
Hold on. Huh? Geez. Is it that?
They're sitting next to each other.
Are these two guys sitting next to each other?
Why don't you go unmute?
Pressing each other, yeah?
One's going to mute one. One mute.
Turn the volume down, too, on the other computer?
I turned the volume down. Okay. So, Brian, turn it down.
Going across the thing.
Yeah, it's still echoing for us.
Still echoing. Someone's got to, like, mute themselves.
Is that a little bit better?
That's much better.
Hey, so...
Monahan, go.
I'm representing Sean Farrell, the owner, and Brian Donahue is here.
Where is he? Hold on one minute.
Is Mickey sitting next to Brian at his house? Is that what's going on?
Mickey, are you sitting next to Brian at his house?
We're at his office.
So, talk through just Brian's thing. Get off of your phone.
Yeah, get off yours and talk on one, because it's echoing in mine crazy.
Okay.
Chairman, you may want to disunder oath.
Yeah, we will.
Thank you.
If there's anyone that's going to speak in this case, please, star nine, or raise your hand if I can see you. If you're not on, if you don't have your camera on, we can't see you. So, star nine, please. Now, going to go to... Are we going to Brian's, Donahue's?
Yes, yes.
Okay. All right, hold on. Anyone else going to testify under this case? If you don't take an oath, you can't testify.
Here they are.
Oh, that's better.
All right, we don't see anybody. Mr. Chin, could you give him an oath, please?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in this matter now before the board?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you.
You have the floor, Mr. Van.
Okay. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Brian Donahue, architect from Donahue Architects in Quincy, representing Sean Farrell and Mike Monahan for property at 30 Townhill Road in Quincy. This is phase two of a six-unit development. The three initial units were built on lot numbered 36. This proposal depicts the combination of 36 and 30 into one parcel with six units on it. So, the total square footage would be 16,211 square feet to complete the lot for the second phase. In terms of the building itself, it is the mirror image of the building that's been completed at 36 Townhill. It's a two-bedroom, three-two-bedroom, two-car garage, parking under for each unit with two guest spaces. So, there's a total of eight parking spaces for this building and eight parking spaces for the one that's completed already. We are before you because we are seeking relief for floor area ratio and lot area per dwelling unit. The actual chart that is on the cover sheet is... I'd like to just correct one number. Actually, with six units, we have to provide 4,500 square feet lot area per dwelling unit. We're at 27. The floor area ratio is .74 as opposed to the required .5. As you can see on the site plan on A1, this building, the buildings are following the lateral property lines, so this building is skewed to Townhill, which opens up the drive a little bit more, so it'll be easier to negotiate the parking spaces.
Yep.
The ground floor is two-car garage, simple stair, up some mechanical space. The main living level is an open plan, kitchen, live-in dining, half-bath, and then we have two bedrooms and two baths on the top level. The height of the structure is... Each unit is 30 feet from garage level to the ridge. The building does step up a foot at each unit because of the grade, so we do have a stepping building similar to the building that's completed across the way. I think... I'm not sure. I try to... I apologize. I sent a revised set of elevations over where the ones that were originally submitted showed a brick veneer on the first floor, but we want to replicate what we did on the first building by just running the clavwards down. So, the revised plan is basically clavwards from ridge to grade. So, we have, on the site plan, we have where it skews back, the proximity to the existing building is 30 feet, and then it's 41 feet at the Townhill edge. So, we feel that it's a fairly easy drive to negotiate. And that's really it. I mean, it's the same building, same layout.
Three-two bedrooms. It's a nice project. Come on, guys. It's getting crazy now.
That's you.
Ain't me. Me, me, me. It's not me.
It's you and Jade, Marty.
Not me. I've been here all day.
Jade turned his phone.
Well, maybe shouldn't have. Now, I see the two parking spaces guest parking, correct?
Yes.
Where's the other two? Across the way from there is going to be two more?
Yes, there are two existing guest spaces now for 36. The building is completed, and then...
The other ones, they don't show.
Rightly across from them, there'll be two spaces as well.
It's not on the plan you sent in. Just a little, there's a little thing there, but it's not...
It's not striped, but it is 18 feet wide for two spaces.
I just wanted to make sure that was parking. That's all I want to make sure.
Yes, sir.
We already had the others, and we're doing the same thing, so finally, there are two spots. Great. No, I don't have any questions. I think it's a pretty park. I know it's going to mirror that, and I think you did a great job as an architect on the first one, and I'd like to second one, too, and mirror images of that. I think it'll look nice.
Thank you, sir.
Any questions of the board?
I have none.
I have none.
Ray Dell?
Do you have to combine those lots? Is that what you're doing in the end, or do you just leave them as separate entities?
One entity.
It becomes one lot.
Mr. Chin?
No questions.
And where's Mr. O'Brien? Where'd he go?
I said, "No questions."
Okay.[1669.75] Okay, thank you. Uh, do we have anything right here?
DPW plans.
I have a letter here, uh, first, anyone wanna speak in favor? Does anyone wanna speak here? And if you do, you're gonna take an oath. Star nine? Virtual hand raised, if I can see ya. No one wanna speak in favor? Okay, I got a letter here from the DPW. Uh, dated August third, twenty twenty, review the above referenced project, our comments are as follows. Submit certified plot plan, existing condition plan to show details of existing lot. Two, specify how much impervious area will be increased through development. Three, provide plans showing the existing site conditions, layout of utility, grading, drainage, and construction details. Four, explain how the surface runoff will be discharged and treated. Five, provide dimensions and grades for paving area and all driveway entrances. Six, upon completion of this project and as-built plans need to be submitted along with digital file. Anything further, please advise. Call that part of the hearing closed. Anyone opposed or undecided? Star nine or virtual hand raised? Star nine or virtual hand raised? Second call? Third call? Call that part of the hearing closed. Uh, any comments, Mr. Kavas?
Uh, no, I just always, when I look at Town Hill Street, I always start thinking, what a tiny little road this is. It was putting a lot of properties on there, but, you know, I think it's, it, it completes this project and looks good, so I'm gonna be in favor of it.
Mr. Ray Dell?
Yeah, I mean, when I first looked at it, I forgot about the building next door until I drove up there, and I had the same general, you know, opinion. And then I saw, you know, how it fits in now with the building adjacent to it, and, and really does kinda, uh, cap it off, so I'm in favor of it.
O'Brien?
Uh, likewise, I'm in favor.
And Mr. Chin?
Right, I think it's an appropriate use of the space, I'm in favor.
Would I, uh, have a motion, please? I'm in favor, Mr. Kavas?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'm at number twenty dash thirty-seven. Michael Monahan for the variance to establish the, to demolish the existing structure and construct a new three-unit townhouse-style residential building on the premises number thirty Town Hill Street. I make a motion to grant the variance.
Second.
On the motion? And none of all in favor? Let's go.
Aye.
Aye. Yes. Kavas?
Aye.
Ray Dell?
Aye.
So Brian?
Aye.
The Chin?
In favor.
What I have, uh, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Pass.
Uh, now, how many guys? We got two extra guys here. Is anyone gonna take off? Anyone wanna sit out one?
I do.
Charlie, you're all set then. This, this.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wanna leave or stay?
I'd be leaving. Someone else wants to jump in?
Mr. Himmel, you want in?
I'm in. I'll be in.
I don't mind leaving either.
Mr. Himmel, do you wanna go? Wanna stay? Yeah, you're in? Okay, yeah. Yeah, Mr. Chin, Mr. Himmel will, uh, take over.
All right.
Thank you.
Bye, guys.
So we got, uh, now you got Mr. Ray Dell and Mr. Himmel. And, uh, next case is D, DVA twenty forty. Ask Patness Inc. for special permit floodplain variance to demolish the existing structure. Construct a new five-story, thirty-unit residential building with parking on the first two levels on the premise number seventy-three Liberty Street. The app to their representative here.
Yes, they do.
So now, they're up.
Oh, great. How are you? Mr. Chairman?
Mr. One sec, one second. Uh, I, I know you're, uh, you're a clerk, and you're appointed, um. If anyone's gonna testify in this case, could you please raise your hand and let us know? Yeah, I know, but I need other people to, if anyone's gonna testify. Anyone else wanna testify in this case? All right, Mark. All right, these two guys gonna have to take, uh, anyone else? Raise your hand or put a star nine on your phone. It's the last case, so I got all these names here. Haven't heard from yet. I got all these people on the phone. No one wants to speak?
Observers.
Just making sure, I don't know, they maybe, they, I don't know if they heard me or not. You have to, star nine. Rutherford, okay. Uh, Mr. Kavas, if you could give him an oath, please, those gentlemen.
Gentlemen, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but this truth, so help you God?
Yes.
Yes. Yes, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor, you have the floor.
Thank you. Good, good evening, Mr. Chairman, and through you, members of the board. My name is Boba Hades, and I represent Lou Patucci and Patness, who are the applicants in this, in this process. Present with behalf of an application both here and in the planning, planning department, planning board. They proposed on seventy-three Liberty Street to build thirty units with fifty-eight parking spots. But in order to do so, there were certain variances, they were requested. Uh, they have requested a setback variance, uh, because of where the building is. Hey, if this, the board remembers, this is a, right now, a bar called Cityside, I think it's, uh, outside, I apologize, outside, I'm not a bar goer, so I don't know. Uh, this outside, they plan on demolishing that building, this building. One of the variances we're seeking is a height variance, and that is because, because this is, and Carlos Sculte, who's the engineer, will be speaking further on this. Because this is gonna be all residential, they cannot go underground on the floodplain. They have to keep it above ground. So we're, we're gonna be seeking a, a variance, we're gonna be seeking a setback, and at that point, in a change of use. It's industrial right now, we wanna bring it to residential. So we're asking the board to consider that. Again, this is the beginning of process. If we get, as we go through the variance process, we also now will be have to go through the planning board. Uh, but as far as our hardship, there is a hardship. The size of the lot, the shape of the lot is different. But more importantly, the topography of the lot has a problem. The fact that it's in a floodplain, they cannot go underground to build residential. They have to stay above ground. That is why we're having a hard time to be able to, uh, we're asking for the height variance on this. Uh, but I do have two individuals, Carlos Sculte and Mark Sullivan, the architect, that can answer any questions. I'd first ask Carlos, Carlos, if he can, uh, speak us to the variance of the height.
Sure, I'll, I'll walk a little bit through the sequence of how we arrived with the plans in front of you today. Uh, and again, for the record, Carlos Sculte was civil environmental consultants, the civil engineer on the project. Uh, so we're working with the project team, and we worked collaboratively to, to come up with a design. Uh, but there were some iterations that included a below-level garage initially with this concept, uh, with the idea that we would incorporate dry floodproofing technology to be able to protect, uh, any below-grade spaces. Uh, and we coordinated with the, uh, city of Quincy, uh, building department just to, to review the plans before we formally submitted. Uh, and then we did, uh, come to the conclusion that a completely enclosed garage below grade, uh, for purely residential use wasn't going to comply with the regulations. Uh, so the design ultimately needed to be revised in order to eliminate that below-grade garage, uh, which also works out, uh, better from a, a safety and a flood protection standpoint as well. Uh, so we eliminated that below-grade garage, uh, and accordingly had to bring that level up one, uh, which pushed the rest of the residential units up a level as well. And, and on the ground level, we are still incorporating some wet floodproofing technologies because of the floodplain associated with Town Brook, that's not too far to the west, about two hundred feet to the west. Uh, so we're basically designing the project to work within the floodplain, uh, to be fully compliant with the regulations and all that, the habitable spaces will be elevated out of the floodplain. Uh, and we've worked very closely with, with Mark and, and the architecture team to try and minimize the building height, uh, by incorporating lower lobby areas in relationship to the, uh, floodplain and, and how we protect it and raise it above the base flood elevation in the area.
Yeah. Thank you. Uh, does the architect wanna?
Yes, I, I was gonna say, I think the board has, uh, samples and diagrams of what we, what we're proposing. Then I have Mark Sullivan here to answer any questions.
I don't know, if you wanna go over anything like the parking on the first two levels and how that's gonna work? And I see each floor has ten.
Yes, they do, and we actually have two spots per unit, and I'd ask Mark Sullivan.
Um, for the record, Mark Sullivan with Chuen Company here in Quincy, uh, architect for the project. Um, just as a broad overview, as discussed earlier, um, we are looking at a five-story building. Um, we have an entry drop-off area off of, um, Liberty Street at the corner of Liberty and Quincy, as you could see on the ground floor plan. We do have a total of thirty units, ten units per floor, uh, and a total of fifty-six parking spaces on both floors, one and two. Um, we do have a veh, vehicle entrance on Liberty Street for the ground floor, and a ramp-up vehicle entrance off of Quincy Street that gets you to the second floor. So two separate entries for both of those garage levels.
All right.
Um, we do have a good portion of amenity space towards the front of the street on Liberty Street and on the kind of front portion of Quincy Street, as well as a secondary entrance off of that. As far as the unit breakdown, we do have, um, like, as mentioned, thirty units, twenty-seven of them are two bedrooms, and three of them are one bedrooms at this time.
Nice.
Um, oops, sorry. And just to go over roughly material-wise, we did add, is, in terms of design, if you look at the elevations, the entry point is kind of more of a beacon as a brick material. Um, it does run up as a pier. The rest of the building on that top floor will have a mansard roof to better fit the character of a residential neighborhood and to also minimize that effect of that fifth floor. Um, and that's feeling, we do use a combination of, um, lap siding with firemen panels to give it even further, kind of push it into that residential character. The ground floor and that second floor would be a brick with a combination of, um, combining the openings to kind of minimize the depth of that in terms of height.
Any questions?
I have none at this time.
Ray Dell?
So, just to clarify, so you guys tried to go down? Is that, is that my understanding to, to minimize the impact and then, and then couldn't because of that flood zone?
Yes, that's, that's one of the issues of the road, and that's the, that's a hardship for the, for the height variance. We couldn't accommodate the parking under the ground.
Condos or apartments?
Was that, I'm sorry.
Are they condos?
Uh, no, they're not, they won't.
Condos.
Oh, they will be condos?
Yes.
Mr. Himmel? Mr. Himmel? Any questions? Mr. Himmel, any questions?
I'm here, John, I think, maybe.
John, you muted? All right, go ahead, John. No. John Himmel. John, any questions? Or something's going on with your speaker, I don't know. Can't hear you, John.
I think he said no questions.
I'll get right back to you.
What an ace.
Yeah, Mr. Frankel, any questions?
Uh, no questions.
Okay. Try one more time, Mr. Himmel. Ain't working. Can you, uh?
No questions, he says.
No questions, wave me off. No questions? Okay, good man. I'll figure out that new thing. Counselor, anything else you wanna add?
No, no, uh, Mr. Chairman, just, just a couple of short notes. Uh, I, I know there are people on the line. This is the beginning of the process. We're asking for variance, there's gonna be input down the road, and I, I think the, the audience has to know that. Again, this is beginning, the, we, we meet the criteria for a hardship, and this is because of the property.
Because of parking, yeah. Uh, I know, I know, I know exactly what you're gonna have to go through, correct? Uh, with the planning board and, uh, and that. All right, is there anyone that wants to speak in favor? Give me a star nine, a waving hand? Mr. Rutherford?
Can you hear me?
Yep.
John Rutherford, sixty-two Ground Mall Road, Quincy. Um, I'm in favor of this project. Um, they actually, um, wanted to do more. They had a public meeting before, I was at it, that was many, many months ago. Um, you know, this is a, this is good new growth. This is a lot of tax revenue we're gonna get on a spot where we're not really getting much tax revenue at all. I'm gonna say that this is sort of a side result of, they wanted to put six hundred units up at the hospital. They only put up four hundred and eighty, four hundred and ninety. We gotta trickle them in all around the city. This is what we have to do. We need ten thousand units. This is point zero three percent of the total goal that we need in the city. So, I mean, they're doing their job, the developers, and this is, you know, people can go to work. I don't see this causing any traffic problems at all. I mean, I'm gonna say this building is not much building, bigger than the, um, the storage facility, which is right there. So I'm hoping maybe some people won't have to look at the storage facility anymore. That building there will block them from looking at that. So overall, I think, um, you know, this is a place where there's gonna be a lot of new projects we're gonna be seeing in the future. So, um, I'm for this project, and that's all I got to say.
Thank you, John. Uh, is there anyone else want to speak in favor? Second call, give me a star nine? Third call? Call that part of the hearing closed. I have a letter here. Hello? All right, I have a letter here from the DPW. August third, twenty twenty, seventy-three Liberty Street, case number DVA twenty forty. Hey, someone, gotta keep it quiet up there, if you don't got unmuted, could be a board member, if anyone. Something, I hear, I hear talking of music in the background. Uh, we have reviewed the submitted above referenced project. Our comments are as follows. Submit certified plot plan and existing condition plan to show the details of the existing lot. Specify how much impervious area will be increased through development. Three, provide plans showing the existing site conditions, layout of utility, grading, drainage, and construction details. Explain how the surface runoff will be treated and discharged. Provide dimensions and the grades for paving area and all driveway entrances. Upon completion of this project, as-built plans shall be submitted along with digital file. Anything else, please advise.
Thank you.
Call that part of the hearing closed. If anyone opposed or undecided, please star nine or raise your hand. Is there anyone opposed or undecided? Anybody? Second call? Third call? The counsel like say anything?
It's not there.
He's not, he's not up?
How much is not there?
No, I thought he was. Call that part of the hearing closed. I know you, uh, I have, uh, before I closed that part of the hearing, I had three letters here, proposal, uh. Can't imagine living there, who's this from? Liberty Street proposal. There's no name.
Polly, Polly Lev.
Yeah, but that's her. That, who, who, who is it? What's the address? What's anything?
It's an email.
I'm not reading.
That's like if, that's all you get these days.
You gotta put a name and address on these people. I don't know who they are.
All right.
They don't have no address. Like, this is crazy. Yeah, I'll tell you what it says, and I'll, I'll read it in the record, but it shouldn't be read like that. They can't put an address here, how do I know where they live? Anyway. Uh, this is Polly Lev, whatever it is. And it's written for the record, and I shouldn't even read her email, I guess. Can't imagine living there with the trains and the highway on one side, constant ongoing transit on the other, heavy construction, the heavy equipment and all the other, the noise, the dirty air will always be present. Say no to unavailable, unaffordable housing, and the dust fields. I have another one here from Matt Pham. Don't make a sound, I'm reaching, reaching out as a resident on Liberty Street on behalf of my mother, who's lived there for the past twenty-one years. She's in opposition to propose about a five-story, seventy-three Liberty Street, hopefully a familiar area. Our proposed location is already congested with daily traffic, never mind the additional traffic. Residential complexes, particular areas, intersection from Bergen Park, we will not be able to handle the traffic coming here. The already residential complex are really, really opposed. Uh, I have one here, reapplication from Rosie World One. That's not even a name, I'm not reading it. So, these are the two letters. I have a third one there, but they can't put their real name on them, you know? These emails gotta be better than that, I mean. Anyone could write, make up an email, start writing, well, it's just mind-boggling, they can't put their name and address and, and put it.
No, I'm sorry.
But when I'm writing a letter for someone, I post, I put my name, my address, where I'm from, my phone number. Like, here I am, I'm not gonna hide behind so who's, or whatever your name is. It's like, bizarre. She pulls my name. Anyway, let's get back to this. Those are, I'll call that part of the hearing closed. I know you guys, uh, have to go to the planning board, uh, for site plan review. I also know you have to go to Affordable Housing Trust. Uh, so those two things have to be in there before this is even considered anyway. Uh, but I think it is some smart growth down there, but I think it's, you know, you're some turn to some industrial, which we're not having anymore, and we're just, and, and I hate to see it go, but not. We're turning a lot of industrial in the city into residential, and someday we're gonna have to slow that down, like, but we need the industrial building, it's not happening. People aren't breaking down doors to have these buildings to build stuff, so, uh, and maybe we could stop building stuff in China someday and build them here, that'd help too. But anyway, get back to the real issue is this plan, and I like it, I really do. I think, uh, two floors of parking, uh, is smart. I think there's plenty of parking there for those residents. Everything's off-street, everything's in-house, trash, everything, I mean. Think you guys did a great job with the building for what you had, uh, there, and putting it into residential. Counselor, I think your architects did a great job. I think they did, I think they did a really good job. And I'll be voting yes under this, under the following conditions, that we take care of the trust, whatever's in the trust has to be taken care of, Affordable Housing Trust, and site plan review. You know, whatever it is for, uh, the approval and conditions on that will be written to this record also. Uh, that would be my vote. Mr. Kavas?
I have, I think it's a nice plan, I'll be voting in favor of it. Uh, a lot of changes in that neighborhood in it, so, good.
Mr. Ray Dell? Mr. Raydell?
I'm in favor, but just to, just for a point of clarification, just because I always ask this question, and I always think it wrong in my head. So if they go to planning, if they go to site plan review and they knock them down units, they'd still have to come back, right?
Yeah. No, yeah.
Yeah.
You should try to prove it.
Yeah. So, yeah, I mean, I think, I think they did a great job. I think that, you know, I think that, like you said-
If this whole thing, if this whole thing, if the building got changed. I mean, say he said, you know what, you can have twenty, you're going to knock the floor off that?
Then we don't-
I'd be fine with that anyway.
Yeah, we have to vote on it. Yeah, okay.
They're never going to add on, of course. And, and what I just want to make sure is the approval and the conditions. So they're going to put conditions on them for certain things. You know, they might want to look at the side of the building, they might want to change something on the, on the fascia, or something like that. But still, with the same thirty units, we're giving fifty-six parking spaces.
Yeah, so the param- so the parameters don't change, yeah. So, no, I think they did a good job getting the parking. I think that, I think that, you know, I appreciate the fact they tried to go down, because we always ask for people to park, 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 you know? And I think in this spot, you're probably not even going to have fifty-six spaces ever, you, you know? So I'm in favor.
Okay. Mr. Frankel?
I'm in favor, intelligent design, as, um, Marty, you said, all self-contained, good use of a space that's not doing anything for the city right now. So I would be voting in favor, again, subject to approval of portable and planning.
Thank you. Mr. Himmel?
We can't read that either, John.
All right. When we take a vote, you're going to have to put up the yes, because you're muted somehow here, brother. I don't know either. Okay, let's start with a voice vote. And I have a motion, please, Mr. Kavas?
Mr. Chairman, amendment number twenty dash forty. Penns Inc. for a special permit floodplain variance to demolish the existing structure and construct a new five-story, thirty-unit residential building with parking on the first two levels on the premises number seventy-three Liberty Street. I make a motion to grant the special, special permit floodplain variance on the condition that they follow the rules of the Affordable Housing Trust and that they do all the conditions that the plan-
Site plan review. Approval and conditions of site plan review.
Second.
Second, and on the motion, standing, please vote, Aitkins, yes. Kavas?
Yes.
Raydell?
Yes.
Frankel?
Yes.
Mr. Himmel? Yes. I have a motion adjourned, please.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All favor? Voice vote? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everyone, have a good night, and thanks for all your help today. Thank you.
Bye, everyone.